Fourth City Council Work Session Meeting. I know we have a lot to talk about to include our survey plan as well as our housing initiatives. So with that, we'll turn it over to City Manager. Alan, over to you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Members of City Council. The first item on tonight's agenda is a presentation of results from our recent community survey. As part of our ongoing commitment to become a more data-informed and community-centered organization, we partnered with Polco to administer a nationally benchmarked survey. The survey gathered valuable feedback from residents on a wide range of topics, including quality of life, satisfaction with city services, and perceptions of community livability, among others. You'll find the full report included in your packet. This evening, the Polco team will guide us through some of the key findings. These insights will play a critical role in shaping our upcoming strategic plan and help you set priorities during the upcoming July retreat. Following the presentation, Owen Miller, our Chief Strategy Officer, along with representatives from the Virginia Institute of Government, will share a quick summary of our upcoming strategic planning process and highlight opportunities for public engagement. But first, I will turn the presentation over to our partners at Polco to walk us through the survey results.
Thank you very much. I'm Sonya Witink. I'm the Executive Vice President of Data Insights at Polco. Oh, sorry. I'll start again. Thank you very much. I'm Sonya Witink, Executive Vice President of Data Insights at Polco. And I've worked with state, local, federal government for the past three decades, mostly with local government, helping them do research. I'm happy to present a summary of the findings from the Newport News National Community Survey. And I'd like to thank Marlin McDaniel, our primary contact at the city, for providing thoughtful and detailed guidance through this process. And I'd also like to acknowledge my colleague, Logan Kirk, who was Polco's project manager. He did the bulk of this work, and I get to come and see you all and take some of the credit and glory. A little about us. Polco offers tools to bring residents' voices into local government. We make civil online engagement accessible to your community. And we've worked with hundreds of jurisdictions nationwide for the last 30 years. We're well-known for our national benchmarking surveys. We learn a lot working with local governments, and we love to share that knowledge through our thought leadership in the space. So please follow us if you would like to see some of our case studies and best practices that we learned from other communities. Bringing resident voices into your planning and performance measurement is a best practice, and that this puts you in excellent company. The National Community Survey, or what we call the NCS, is a standardized five-page comprehensive survey that allows municipalities to assess resident opinion about their community and their local government. The community livability is categorized into 10 main facets, shown here. These facets align with municipal departments, which makes it easier for staff to quickly find the detailed information in the report that's most relevant to their work. We'll be just doing a quick summary of the results, but there is a lot of good data to dig through. So just giving you an idea of how this was done, how a survey is conducted really matters. So we use our expertise to make sure that your results are representative. We select our sample without bias and make statistical corrections for common response disparities. In this case, all Newport News residents were eligible to participate in the survey, but we randomly selected 7,000 addresses to receive the survey invitation. Data collection began on April 8th and remained open for six weeks. All 7,000 received the postcard invitation to this online survey, and another 5,000 were also mailed a paper survey with a prepaid postage envelope to send it back. The survey was also available in English and Spanish. 313 responses were received, which is a lowish response rate, but is a good margin of error, plus or minus 6%. Our target is a 4% to 6% margin of error, which is the industry standard for this work. We compared the demographic profile of our survey responses to those, the adults in your community, using the Census and American Community Survey as a guide. And as a survey press practice, we statistically weighted the survey results. Additional to this effort, we also provided a link online through a community-wide open participation survey that was publicized by Newport News and received an excellent response of 698 responses. This presentation is based on the 313 responses from the random sample, as it was statistically sampled. The open participation results are in the full report. One advantage of participating in our community survey is that you can compare yourself to other communities across the nation. We developed the first and have the largest benchmark database of public opinion. We have about 500 communities to compare to, and so you are in great company, as these are the folks who do, who use data to inform their decisions, and they're all high-performing communities across the country. It's good to note that you're not being compared to every town or every city, but you're being compared to the best-run cities. So having a wide variety of communities, we were able to choose a specific group to compare your results to. We, because it's a more accurate comparison, to choose cities of a similar size and also of a similar median income. And we also chose to cut off any surveys that were, all surveys are from 2022 and more recent. One note on, this is just a part of the weighting table, just to show you, we wanted to highlight the representativeness of this result. So you can see here the raw percentage of respondents in each category, unweighted, followed in the second column by the same percentage after statistical weighting. And lastly, the makeup of the community based on the ACS and Census. And we're very pleased that the key demographics and geographic categories, the unweighted makeup, was actually pretty close to the target, giving us a well-represented group of respondents. And then with statistical weighting, we bring that even closer. So on to a few of the results. A bit of context for the presentation charts. The questions were asked on a four-point scale, where the respondent could choose excellent, good, fair, or poor. For ease of comparison, we show excellent or good in most of the charts. We also note the comparison to the benchmark with shading in the bars. In future years, we'd also create a trend line, as benchmarking against yourself is really the best benchmark. In the survey, we have two key questions that ask directly about our 10 facets of community livability. The first asks residents to rate the overall quality of each facet. And here we see that Parks and Recreation is the highest rated, and only Safety is below the benchmark. The second question asks about the same facets, but is centered on how important residents think it is for you to focus on them in the next 10, in the next two years. We asked about the quality and the importance, so that we can, we can assess the quality-importance gap, which I will show on this next slide. So this chart, also included in the report, is one of many ways to interpret your data. It can be used to help the community determine which areas may need additional resources, policy focus, or even just looking at what the perception of is in the community, and maybe it's just about education, if you feel like there are perceptions that don't meet the reality on the street. So this will show you which are performing well by, which are performing well by comparison. It shows which areas are relative high importance and lower quality to residents. So two facets with large gaps and high levels of importance here are Safety and Economy. And we'll take a closer look at those two in the presentation. Shown here, we see a count of the survey items as they compare to the benchmark. Of the 122 survey items for which residents provided evaluative ratings, about three-quarters were similar to the benchmarks. Moving on to a brief highlight of our findings, I'll point out a few items that stood out to me. Your residents have a good quality of life. About nine in 10 residents rated the overall quality of life in Newport News, and Newport News as a place to live as excellent, good, or fair. In addition, roughly six in 10 residents plan to remain in the city for the next five years, and would recommend living in Newport to someone who asked. As Newport is near interregional military presence, we do expect that there's, there's a bit more of a transitional community, and so there's a little less certainty around tenure than in some other communities. Safety was a top priority for residents. Mentioned earlier, among the 10 facets of livability, a focus on safety emerges as the top priority for residents. About eight in 10 Newport News residents felt safe in their neighborhood in the day, have felt safe, half-felt safe downtown, and 70% felt safe in other commercial areas. About half-felt safe from property crime, which is similar to other communities, but safety from violent crime and safety in the downtown area both ranked below the benchmarks. Police and fire services, not shown here, got good marks near the benchmark. So this may be a perception issue, but it's something, whether it's a perception or a quality, true quality issue, they're both ones that need to be addressed. Like most communities across the nation, there is a concern about economic health. When we looked at the overall ratings of the 10 facets of livability, we saw a large gap between the importance and the quality ratings for the economy, which is also true in other communities. Looking at here at some specific aspects of the local economy, while most items were also similar to the benchmark, we see the lowest rating for cost of living and the vibrancy of the downtown area, the latter of which ranked lower than the benchmark. Ratings for vibrancy of commercial areas, which was included to differentiate from your downtown area, were considerably higher than the downtown. So that was a pretty quick review, but overall, in summary, Newport News residents have a good quality of life. The survey revealed strengths and opportunities, and you can dig more into some of the results in the report. Safety ranks as a top priority for residents, and like most places, residents place a high importance on economic health. As we close, I want to emphasize that there are a variety of ways survey results can be used. Most commonly, jurisdictions use their survey data to monitor trends over time in resident opinion, to inform budgeting processes and strategic plans. Your staff can dig deeper into the findings. Our online reports provides a lot more detail on every facet, and a lot of, you can also dig down into and do cross tabs by demographics and geographic areas for every, every question on the survey. And Polco also has tools that you can use to continue engagement with your residents, and our staff can support you in using those.
Awesome. I would just say, so I missed half of it, but just on the half that I did see. Thank you for the work on that. Is there any questions from City Council? Councilman Long?
Yeah, I have a question. You just mentioned that there have been some cities that have used education to change some of the ratings over time. On what areas did they use education to increase it? And I'm most particularly thinking about safety in our case. If there were cities that utilized education as a means to bring in the perception of safety up? If you have any feedback on that?
Sure. I mean, I think there's two things. There's, there, education, just in terms of having, like, it might, it might just be small campaigns that you do to say, like, "We heard from you that, you know, you're concerned about violent crime. Did you know that this is our actual statistics on violent crime?" And just kind of trying to bring that in, weaving that into a lot of your communications. And that would be like sort of the simpler end. We've also seen, not fully on safety, but I've seen some cities who've actually done full kind of media-like campaigns and branding campaigns, whereas there's a local community in Colorado that was always considered the least safe area in Denver. And they, they had a lot of artist communities, and they rebranded Greeley, it was called, and they did Greeley Unexpected, like what you don't know about that community. And that was really, had a profound impact on their area. They also had a lot, a ton of growth in the region after that, so that also it had an impact. But they went that far, where they were just like, "We are not moving the needle." And it's not just, our, our community hears it from all the communities around, and so it was, it felt like the target was a little bit bigger than even their own community.
All right, thank you.
A quick question. I know you said comparatively, speaking to other community cities our size, what is our response rate in relation to some of those other similar populated cities? As comparison, like, is it?
It is lower than some of them, but it's probably, it's in the range of the communities of the same income, I would say. Probably on the size, it varies a bit more. But income is one of the biggest determinants of the response rates.
Now, is it data that reflects the youngest to the oldest participant of the survey?
Yeah, I would say, I mean, in every survey we do, no matter where, younger folks respond in lower proportions than older folks, and that is one of the reasons we do statistical weighting. But, yeah, so I would say it varies, but it, like, because it was done in a random sample, there's a lot of research now, and honestly, response rates are going down everywhere. And so, I don't know if you know, the Pew Institute, they do a lot of work on public opinion research, and they've done a few studies in the last years that have basically asked the same questions that really expensive national studies do. And they do them locally, and they do them with small response rates, just, you know, spending less money on it, like getting fewer responses. They found that as long as you're doing the statistical sampling, they're getting the same results. So I know, like, when you look at 313, that seems like, does that represent my community? But 300 does represent a community if you're doing it in a statistically robust way.
I think we're good. Thank you.
All right.
Then next up, we have the Strategic Housing Initiative Plan.
I think first, if I'm not mistaken, Mayor, we've got the, we've got the strategic plan update as well. Absolutely. So just quickly, first of all, just want to, you know, we've talked about all the work that went into the collecting the survey. Certainly want to give kudos to Marlin McDaniel and the interdepartmental team that did a lot of that work. With Polco's guidance, we went out and created a plan to really get as much robust feedback as we could. Obviously, we really wanted to get, and heard it from council at our previous retreat, really wanted to get a representative sample of our community in terms of feedback. So just want to give credit where credit is due. I think I saw the team at more than a dozen events, maybe closer to two dozen events over the course of those six weeks, to really generate a lot of that feedback, and then obviously ended up with more than 1,000 responses. So appreciate all the work that went into that. Quickly, the second portion of our presentation today, while distinct, is related, and hopefully you'll see the connection. As mentioned in the slides that we just saw from our friends at Polco, you know, one of the primary reasons to conduct the NCS study is to use it for strategic planning purposes. And it is a component of, a really important component of, not exclusive, but an important component of what we are going to put in, in terms of the community engagement and community feedback for our update, for our strategic plan. Before I really get into some of the process that we have planned, I'd like to call up Charles Hartgrove. He's the Managing Director of the Virginia Institute of Government. They're our partner in this effort. I'd ask Charles to kind of touch on what they do at the institute, and also how they're going to play a role in the work that we're going to do.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of Council, thank you, and appreciate that. Again, my name's Charles Hartgrove. I'm from Virginia Institute of Government. We're the local government support arm of the Weldon Cooper Center for Public Service at the University of Virginia. Just to tell you a little bit about myself. So over the last six years, I've served as Managing Director of VIG. Previously, I had the pleasure of serving as Chief Deputy Commissioner of Virginia Department of Taxation, everyone's favorite state agency, always welcome to wherever we went. But the bulk of my career is in city and town management. I spent over 20 years working as a local government leader here in Lynchburg, Ashland, Middleburg, and Gate City, Virginia. So that is my passion and my background. Ms. Dipmar, Jane Dipmar, will be the facilitator, working with you all at your extended work session on July 8th. She's also the person that will be reaching out to you all for individual interviews beforehand and afterwards, and sort of shepherding and working with staff through this process and providing support until there's a final report out to you all later this year. And there's Ms. Dipmar's background. She is a certified mediator for Virginia Supreme Court and a former elected official in local government as the Chair of Auburn Royal County. Just to reintroduce you very briefly to the Cooper Center for Public Service, to star vision and mission, and some of the other business units of the Cooper Center. Economic Policy Studies works with communities on economic future studies, also provides a quarterly economic update for the Commonwealth. Center for Survey Research, like our friends at Polco, do professional statistically valid research for public-facing organizations. The demographic groups, most people familiar with when you see your school funding come through, that's based on population data, cleaned by our demographics group at the university. The Institute Engagement Negotiation works on environment-related, environmentally-related programs and relationships within communities. And several of you are probably familiar with the Sorenson Institute for Political Leadership, which provides programming for community leaders. And then, of course, the Institute of Government, which I have the pleasure of running. We work with your colleagues around the Commonwealth. We serve over 230 towns, cities, and counties. We work with city councils, boards of supervisors, and town councils like you, doing strategic planning, doing training on roles of responsibility, and working with your staff, whether it be the C-suite and City Manager's Office, down to your frontline employees on training and development programs. So I'll get, turn it back over to, again, he's going to walk you through the process, and we look forward to working with you, and I'm happy to answer any questions, Council, if you have any this evening.
All right. So I'm going to spend just a couple minutes talking about the process that we have planned here, working with our friends at the Virginia Institute of Government. Just quickly, a little background, perhaps, for some of our audience joining us online. Now, what is a strategic plan? In short, it's a high-level roadmap. It can include things like our vision, mission, and values. That's certainly what we've had in the past. And it really is supposed to present this roadmap for city staff, for council, for a foreseeable time in the future. And it's really a guide to how we can use our precious city resources. The current plan, we are currently operating under the 2020 to 2025 plan. It is due technically to be complete by the end of the year. We have traditionally run on five-year increments. It was crafted in 2019, and while we generally plan on doing a five-year plan, we did go out and amended it in 2023. We always have that option, and based on the turnover on council, for example, or large outside events, coming through COVID, for example, we thought it would be timely to get some of that feedback. Now it is time, at the end of our five-year period, where we like to take a deeper dive into that strategic plan, and that's what we'll be doing over the course of the rest of the year. As you see on the slide, you know, we certainly believe, and others do, that those regular updates ensure that the strategic plan remains relevant, not only to council, but to the larger community as well. So I would be remiss if I didn't say that the strategic plan itself is really the foundation, but it's not alone. It really works in tandem with some of our other efforts. The quarterly scorecard reports that we provided you, obviously, there are KPIs that really measure our performance as an organization and the community in terms of how we're making improvements. Those are companion pieces to that, and hopefully, aligned and working together, they allow decision-makers, council, for example, to really make data-informed decisions on how you allocate those resources and to do so most effectively. Community input, one thing we've certainly heard, both from Alan, the manager, and then from council, is that we want to make sure that we get as much community input into these plans and processes as we possibly can. Obviously, you saw that and how that's important for the community survey. We are going to incorporate those existing public input mechanisms, the survey, for example, our prior budget pulse survey into the document, but we also want to provide additional opportunities, in-person opportunities, for our community to engage and provide us input on really what their priorities are moving ahead. And so you'll begin to see some of those opportunities, two or three, coming up this summer, later this summer. summer, later this summer, and into the fall. We've got some fun things planned. That's certainly what Alan's looking for, and make it a little more engaging than your traditional community feedback. So what's next? So for council, I think if I'm not mistaken, some of you have already had an initial conversation with one of our consultants, Jane, that Charles mentioned. I think there's still a few more to go. We're going to have the retreat coming up in July, where we'll really get council's collective body in terms of the input, and after that, we may follow up with some additional calls as well. We'll have opportunities for the public, as I just mentioned, to provide some feedback to us as well. Stay tuned. Information will be coming out on that throughout the course of the summer, and we're looking forward to a really good turnout from our community. And then finally, I'll kind of stand, myself and Charles will stand for any questions if anybody has any.
You were good. Thank you.
Thank you. I was looking for my phone to friend. Terry, you're supposed to tell me what to do. So our next presentation.
You got it?
Yeah. Alan, you want to kick us off?
I'll do the official bit, sure. The second item on this evening's agenda is the Strategic Housing Initiatives Plan, also known as the SHIP, the SHIP. As highlighted in our comprehensive housing study, the demand for diverse, affordable, and mixed-use housing options in our community continues to grow. In response, staff from the city manager's office, planning, development, codes, and the Newport News redevelopment housing authority, we have all worked collaboratively over the past several months to develop this plan. Also, with a little starter fluid from Councilmember Long. The SHIP represents a coordinated, forward-thinking approach to housing grounded in the principles of sustainability, equity, and responsiveness to community needs. Tonight's presentation will provide an overview of the plan's key recommendations and strategies. These are directly informed by both the city's strategic housing priorities and the findings from the comprehensive housing study. We look forward to walking you through these data-driven proposals and hearing your thoughts. Your input will be critical as we prepare to discuss implementation and the next steps during the July council retreat. So at this time, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Owen Miller and Terry Francis.
Great, thanks, Alan. I thought I escaped, but bear with me. Appreciate your patience for one more minute, and then I'll turn it over to Terry Francis, our Neighborhood Service Office Manager, who's really going to lead the majority of the presentation. Just quickly, I just wanted to say, you know, it's fitting tonight that we speak to both our larger strategic plan update, as well as this really important priority, and our strategic housing initiatives. I think it's important to focus on that because it's really come up as a priority in recent years, not only at the council level, but really in the community as well. I will note that facilitating quality housing has been in the past a component of our current strategic plan, and in fact, creating a strategic plan, a housing strategic plan, was a recommendation in our current strategic plan. This, I think, you know, over the course of what Terry will share tonight and the work that we'll be doing over the next six months, hopefully with the opportunity to have it adopted later this year, I think that'll really accomplish that goal, and in the process, hopefully, really make progress on our community's housing needs. So without further ado, I'll turn it over to Terry.
Going to lower this, you notice I'm a little shorter than everyone else. All right, good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time, and thank you for the opportunity just to share an update on the work that we've done behind the scenes on our strategic housing initiative plan. That's a mouthful, so I will consolidate that tonight, and I'll say SHIP a lot of times, but I will remind you of what we're here for today. We'll cover tonight why this work is necessary, we'll also cover what we've done so far, and we'll also cover steps to move forward. The goal is just to prepare us for later conversations that we hope to have more detail during our next retreat, which is in July with council. So let's dive in, if you will. Why are we working on this ship? As Owen mentioned, the Strategic Housing Initiative Plan is a strategy that was recommended through our comprehensive housing study. If you're not familiar with the comprehensive housing study, we launched that through the Planning Department in December of 2024. At that time, we were notified of findings and key strategies that can help us to reach housing production. The overall goal of our comprehensive housing study was to provide us with an housing inventory. It was actually the first housing study that the city ever did. So it gave us a real fine baseline of what we need to do to increase our housing production. We wanted to know what the demographic trends were. We wanted to get a gap analysis of what we need to reach future housing needs, and then also, we wanted to get short and long-term goals that will help us to reach housing production and development over the course of the next several years. The study also included key findings, and one of which everyone will remember probably is that we need 21,000 units by 2050. So how will we get there? Our ship is going to help drive us in that direction. So I want to tell you a little bit about why a ship is important and why we are doing this work. Outside of what we received from our comprehensive housing study, it's going to help us to address housing affordability. We know that's a big challenge in today's market when it comes to renting or when it comes to home buying. We also wanted to help us to address supply, again, what we need to grow towards our growing community and population members, and it'll also help drive us towards future stability. The ship will also serve as a guiding force to help us bridge together departmental insights. As Alan mentioned, and we've done a significant amount of work behind the scenes with city departments to be able to provide a unified plan that can help get us to where we need to be in the future, all of which we hope will help us to maximize diverse funding sources and incentives that'll help investors come in our community and help drive the need that we need, and also create a diverse housing landscape for our residents. So we'll take a further step into what a ship actually is, and again, what we hope to glean from doing this work. A ship is a comprehensive roadmap. You've heard that a lot tonight. We're working on a lot of roadmaps here, but it's going to help take us in the right direction. We got a lot of information from our comprehensive housing study, telling us what findings we have, and also how we compare to other cities and peer cities, especially in the Hampton Roads region. So our strategic housing plan, or our ship, is going to give us strategic actions. It's going to give us measurable goals to work towards as we look at those housing production needs. And it's also going to identify internal and external partners that can help us to drive this ship. To get to this point, we have reviewed numerous case studies and looked at other cities that have similarities to Newport News that can give us some food for thought on what strategies we should pursue in our strategic housing initiatives plan or our ship. So in essence, the Newport News ship is going to be a collective, is going to show, I'm sorry, collective departmental insights that give us that unified vision. It's going to tell us what to prioritize, how can we get to the point of these 21,000 units, and how can we make it accessible and affordable for our community members? The comprehensive housing study let us know that there are other cities that have other similarities to ours and have some of these same challenges. So our ship is going to be a public-facing document that citizens and developers alike can refer to, to help us know and help them know what we're looking for in the future and how we can build towards that productive development. With specific efforts in mind, we also hope that our Strategic Housing Initiative Plan will promote economic vitality across the city and social equity as well. So where are we at in the process? What's our path forward, and what have we actually done? As I said, we have our comprehensive housing study, which provided a great baseline. Through that study and through the guidance of council, we formed a steering committee of over 14 members. We also had over 30 stakeholder interviews to help drive the discussion. Our stakeholders were external partners and as well as our steering committee. We had members from financial institutions. We had military professionals. We had housing or industry representatives. We also worked with community members and some of our faith-based entities to help get to the point that we are today, as well as some of our nonprofits. And additionally, over the course of this spring, we established an internal housing committee, which served, well, I'm sorry, which hosted several city departments, and at that time, we had department interviews and collective department discussions, where we also shared and resourced different case studies, again, showing the need that we have and showing strategies that'll help us to get to where we need to be to our housing production. So with all of that work in mind, we've put together four primary focus areas that we hope will help us to drive the ship. And those focus areas are housing policy, regulatory and regulatory reform, we have housing production and redevelopment, we also have preservation, maintenance, and neighborhood stability, as well as housing affordability and access. So using those key findings, and don't worry, I'm not going to go into all of these strategies right now. We hope that we can take this on the road during the council retreat and have discussions with you guys. And there are additional information in council in your packets today that gives you kind of fact sheets on each one of these different tactics. But having said that, we've taken all 20 or so of these tactics, and we've organized them into the different themes. In that case, we can use this information to, again, identify which strategies we will prioritize, which strategies are going to help best meet the needs of our growing community, and which strategies are going to take that work of our internal and external partners. So now looking at how the tactics are categorized, again, I'm not going to go into too much detail, but taking a quick look at these tactics, you'll notice that many of them are tactics that are going to help us with zoning, help us address land use, help us address some of our permitting needs, and also financial incentives that can help improve the city's development landscape. Many of these are tactics that are already in place, some are tactics that need further exploration, and many of which we need your guidance, council, and we need your feedback on how you want to help shape the housing production for our community.
Can we pause there and just go back?
Yeah, absolutely.
Just for just for council, can we go back to the blue slide?
Got it.
I know this is Councilman Long's, like, sort of pet project, but the two things that I've sort of been a fan of for a long time is the land value tax. That's what Charlottesville has done, and so has Richmond. I think there's a lot of value in that, so I'll be sort of trying to push that in the council retreat, as well as the, Alan, the permit process. We've been talking about that. So those are like the two levers that I see other cities have used, and then perhaps, I know there's some 25 lot discussion that you wanted to talk about. So I just wanted to flag that for the record. Those are the two or three that I think are, can get us the biggest bang for our buck.
Anybody got that on my cheat sheet? I need to.
Land? Yeah.
All right, thanks, Bob.
The land value tax we can definitely use.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Mayor. Those are really great strategies, and I hope, again, we can explore those, we can explore how we can weave them into the current work that's already being done in the city, and again, how it's going to help us to meet those production needs, and also development and economic needs that we've heard through so many of the presentations tonight. So moving to the next tactic, these efforts are going to help to increase housing supply. They're going to support developers in producing new adaptive housing, and additionally, just keep in mind, we are already ahead of the curve, or ahead of the wave in that sense, that some of the tactics are in progress. Some of them are being explored by various city departments, and I believe there will be further discussion at the July retreat from some of those departments on these tactics as well, so look forward to that. But again, these tactics offer a little bit more long-term maintenance in nature, and some of them may take a little bit more time to fully research, so I'm looking forward to having those discussions with you all later on. All right. So our third area lists potential tactics that can help Newport News to promote that equitable access across the city. Help us with housing ownership, help us with assistance, and help us with enhancing partnerships. And many of these projects are in place, but again, it's going to take a little bit more forward thinking, a little bit more resource and community engagement to help push them and drive them to where we need it to be, and also to include our citizens in the process. Oops, I think I might have, did I skip one? Okay. All right. So lastly, we have several tactics. These tactics are really going to be an instrument in helping us to reach the goal of meeting that projected 21,000 units, and these tactics have to do with improving the neighborhood conditions, maintaining our existing housing stock, and offering incentives for individuals that are helping to revitalize and rehab homes in the neighborhood, in the area. So what's next? Besides the July council retreat, where I'm sure many of you are taking notes, and I look forward to going through those notes with you, I just want to share that this is a fluid process. The work definitely doesn't stop here. I think we've just began to break the mold with some of this work. There are anticipated updates and anticipated thoughts that we see along the way, and now we want to just consider how we can move forward with these strategies, how we can use the department insights and the research that we've gathered, as well as how can we align these tactics with our strategic housing plans and strategic priorities across the city. So before I get into detail of this final slide, I really want to just point out that these are steps that we will take upon the completion of the final ship document. Council, with your guidance, with your consideration, we plan to take the next steps and the next milestones to create our final ship. As Owen mentioned, we do anticipate that ship to be finished before the turn of the year, and when complete, it will require approval by council. It's also going to require additional tactics to be reviewed and to be vetted and to be approved. And we know that we want to continue to have that community engagement, as we heard from our survey today, so we want to make sure that the tactics are reviewed with the community. We want to continue with those engagement efforts, and we want to have periodic updates, of course, that may require changing as a result of housing production needs, as a change of the housing market, or as our population continues to grow. So with that in mind, I'd just like to thank you all for your time. I'd also like to give a special thanks to the departments for your support and your resources in this effort. This work cannot be done without you guys. We will continue to provide updates on a regular basis. We also anticipate that there will be more opportunities for community engagement in this process in designing our final ship. And then as a reminder for council, I really look forward to having discussions with you in July on these strategies and tactics, how we can move forward, and what's your vision? What would you like to see for our housing landscape? The end.
Well done.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I do have one.
Yes, sir.
Before I turn over to Councilman Long, I just want to say I think that was one of the most well-briefed presentations we've had in a very long time, so just kudos on that presentation.
Thank you.
And all the hard work. It really was noticed.
Thank you.
Councilman Long.
I was just going to say, thank you, Terry and Owen, for putting all the work that you've done over the last year, because we did the study last year and the work you've been working on this year.
Thank you.
I just want to put in context, the 21,000 units, I would say about two-thirds is really redevelopment of our older aging housing stocks. So as you look at the packet, I think it's a draft, it will be well-served, we look at the packet, so when we go to retreat on the 8th, that we actually have a robust conversation because people are asking us how we're going to redevelop our landscape of housing, how we're going to offer affordability, how we're going to draw in developers and investors to come into our city. So I think it's really important to take the time, do some homework on what's provided tonight, today, and we can have a real good conversation at the retreat.
Awesome.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. Very good. Looking forward to further discussions, especially at the retreat.
Thank you.
But yeah, I just want to echo what Councilman Long said. I was really intrigued with the residential improvement program you're talking about, especially with the residential facade improvement opportunities that can be out there. As I think we all know that doing home improvements, especially for seniors who are on fixed incomes, it is a tremendous financial stress for them to maintain their homes, where, you know, the homes that they've lived in for 20, 30, 40, 50 years, and if we could help them with, you know, improving their homes, you know, gutters, windows, siding, all the other good stuff, I think it's going to go a long way in what Councilman Long was talking about in hitting the 21,000 number.
Yeah, and if I could just chime in behind that, one of the items is a housing trust fund, so resources have to be allocated, so that's why it's important to make sure we understand what we want to do as a council, because next year, budget season comes around, how we're going to fund some of these strategies that we're trying to tackle.
Yep, absolutely.
Got a quick question for the retreat. Will you have the data for the faith-based properties that they were looking? I know it was one of the.
Adaptive reuse of faith-based. I can see what we have in-house. I know that we have a really good amount of work that's happening with our comprehensive planning department, and I will take a look into GIS to see what we can look at as far as unused or underutilized adaptive church sites. Yeah.
Thank you.
And I would just say for Councilman Harris's comments, the bulk of what we can, what we are allowed to do on churches is actually controlled by the General Assembly, and so it's something to be noted of for our package that's in Jerry Wilson. A lot of it, we can't do like the apartments on church land because that's controlled by the state, but I think we have a lot of underutilized and sort of. by the state, but I think we have a lot of underutilized and sort of older churches here in the city.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and that's more so I wanted to be able to have something I could look at for the properties that are vacant. There's a few vacant churches, and also in addition to that, we're speaking to some of the blighted storefronts, so that's something that we could get some data on and see what we can look at as we go through this process.
Absolutely. I'll continue working with our colleagues to get that information. I believe that was one of the tactics, adaptive reuse of shopping centers as well, so thank you for pointing that out. Any other questions or comments? All right, awesome. You guys are great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you, Alan. Okay, I think we have comments, ideas, suggestions, and then that will be it. Then we have some extra meetings at the end. I'll just start this way and go around.
No.
John. Tina.
I just had something real quick. And I serve on the HRT board. We have a meeting coming up this week, and we had, I have had a couple residents ask about additional shuttle, not shuttle stick, bus stop locations, covers. And I know from what I have learned being on board that that money would come from the council. So if that's something that we would recommend, and I get an idea that's, if the usage of that site warrants a stop for families to sit.
Like a cover?
Yeah, the, yeah.
You're referring to the bus shelters.
The bus shelters.
Yes.
Sorry, but the bus shelters. And if Ms. Lisa, if I'm speaking correctly, we do take the financial burden for the shelters in the city.
If the city.
I don't, that's why, it would depend on ridership.
Councilman Harris is absolutely correct. HRT has a schedule of shelters that they are installing over time. If we choose to install out of sequence, it becomes our responsibility to install everything from the pad to the solar lighting, to the size, surveying the lot and the trash. It also becomes our responsibility to maintain and replace it. And an average shelter right now is about $12,000 to $15,000 per installation.
All right, yeah. Well, I was going to inquire about what the ridership is of this particular stop that somebody asked about, and if it warrants, looking into it, I just wanted to know if that's something we would.
Do we have any idea how far behind HRT is?
So when HRT was granted the regional state funding in 2021, the peninsula, Hampton and Newport News, were the beneficiaries of early installation of bus stops. Newport News also, several years ago, on its own, acquired a CMAC grant of $300,000, and we also installed our own under that grant. HRT is now focused on the South Side, so we're probably about a two-year-out program before they return back to the peninsula. So we would have to look at riderships. There are times that there's additional state DRPT funding that they say, hey, we have one or two high-request areas, you know, can you help us at least survey it, or something like that? One of those examples are Blaine Boulevard between Warwick and Campbell. There are two new shelters in there, and we were beneficiary of additional state money for that. So it does happen, but as far as a routine scheduled reinstillation, we're about two years out, so.
And I think this is a perfect example of perhaps referring it to the committee, like the neighborhood and the one that the chair, that might be the best look and give staff some time, take a look at it. Anything else on your answer? I just have the two items that are ready to vote. I think it's the Boys and Girls Club is $5,000, and the Peninsula Alpha's Father's Day Breakfast is $1,000. I think we have the majority, more than five signatures. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Mayor Jones?
Four.
Councilman Long?
Four.
Councilwoman Dick?
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany?
Four.
Councilman Coleman?
Four.
Councilman Ely?
Four.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. And last thing I'll say, just as a reminder, we just need, if you could just stay and just sign for the Southeast Community Day parade, so that we can get the funds to them sooner rather than later. I don't have a gavel, but with that, we're adjourned.
One.
Comments? I gavelled it. Sorry.